The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of May 22, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it on the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda nor for items listed on today's agenda.
Thank you. And for the record, we had Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Cor enter at 3:32. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Highway Corridor Enhancement Presentation on Future and Current Beautification Plans.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to have a presentation this afternoon from Greg Strakelous and Greg Grebe, our friend from Parsons, to go over some high-level thoughts as well as some interesting images to help demonstrate some of the forward thinking that we've been doing related to our highway corridor. So I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, City Commissioner.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go. Councilmembers, I'm Greg Strakelous for the record, joined here by Greg Garab and Jeff Lorman from Parsons and also Luis Topete, Assistant Public Works Director. We've got a brief presentation on highway beautification. The presentation will go over beautification approaches such as hardscape, landscape, monument, art, and recent focus corridors being State Road 58 and 99, West Side Parkway, also Wybelle Road. We do have partners in our efforts. They include Caltrans, the Auto Mall, Bolt House Properties, and of course Parsons and other consulting engineers with Landscape Architects. Recent freeway construction projects demonstrate some semblance of beautification, and that's thanks in large part to the Thomas Roads Improvement Program. TRIP has really enabled city staff to work with its designers to really integrate some of these beautification concepts into our freeway corridors that the city has constructed. For example, we see beautiful decorative streetlights on our bridge overpasses. We see either formed concrete rock or actual rock enhancements giving it some vertical and visual relief across some of the bridge enhancements. That's not to say we still don't use mulch. You see in the lower left-hand picture, there's plenty of mulch that is still used. In terms of some of the texture median separators, those are being integrated as part of the project as well. So moving on to one of the most recent interchange projects that has integrated beautification enhancements, the Hoskins Boulevard Interchange. Here, Caltrans had a project to improve the interchange. It had a, I'll call it a landscape component to it, and during the design and construction process, the city was able to work with Parsons to redesign the beautification component of the interchange, integrating a bit more rock, integrating some variation in colors that you see here. We had worked with Caltrans to coordinate before the contractor reached this level of landscaping work at this particular interchange. We coordinated with Caltrans to ask for a change order to integrate these design concepts to replace the Caltrans design concepts, and they were open to listening to us on that one. There was an additional cost for this level of effort, though. It cost the city an additional $700,000 roughly to contribute to the Caltrans contractor operation to build it this way. But the long-term benefits of this are less irrigation water being used and also less Caltrans maintenance, which are selling points for these types of beautification efforts. Another one that will actually go to City Council, actually not this one, it's a different one that we've got in a slide presentation, but this is the Monumentation Welcome Along the Hoskins Bridge. This is two years plus in the making. Because it is on a Caltrans facility, there are layers of review and approval at the Caltrans headquarters in Sacramento and at District 6. They include structural components, which makes sense, artistic compliance standards, copyright law checks, color imaging and messaging. Are the notes placed in any particular pattern to represent letters or words? So there's a lot of layers associated with getting Caltrans approval for this. And at this point in time, for this particular project, we've gone through all those layers of Caltrans approval. We have applied for an encroachment permit, a right-of-way permit, to actually build it. That's where we stand now. We will hopefully work those details out and get final approval to go out to bid to build or at least get prices for what this is anticipated to cost and bring that back to Council for consideration. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk about the landscape design plans for 99 and 58.
Hi. My name is Jeff Lorman. I'm Parsons' lead landscape architect. So on the West Side Parkway, we looked at what we had going in, and the idea was to try to design something that was simple but clean and aesthetic. So we went with these bands of rock or decomposed granite along the corridor with areas of planting associated with them, particularly to reinforce the banding. The remaining areas are mulch. This is in part because of costs, but it also created a thematic approach for the corridor with the curving lines, that's sort of the flow of the roadway and that type of approach. How do I make it? All right. So this is another concept that we came up with for one of the quadrants in Mohawk with, again, using that sort of rock and decomposed granite reinforced with planting and the curving flowing lines associated with it to create the aesthetic for this. And it sort of keeps it consistent, although because it's a quadrant, and so it has more area, say, than the corridor itself, it allows us to create a little bit more interest to it than, say, just the corridor itself. Just some ideas. These are some of the plants that have been used. You're trying to use drought-tolerant, native, and plants that are tough and will survive. Some of these are not necessarily plants that Caltrans typically uses, like the blue agave, because of the very, very pointed ends of those plants. They're with concern for their maintenance staff. And then that all sort of leads to the 58-99 interchange, which is a significant interchange in the city, just based on size and the crossing of the state freeways and all. And the West Side Parkway, Centennial Parkway, that leads into this, but we have this very special interchange. So we looked at taking those concepts that were developed and really playing them out for this interchange. The bands intertwine. We have more bands. The bands are a stabilized decomposed granite, which is basically, it's really mixed and poured like a concrete, but it's a decomposed granite and looks like a decomposed granite, but it won't erode, which is a maintenance savior. And then we reinforced those things with planting. We have some boulders. Then we have added art pieces to the interchange area. And if I'm going too fast, let me know. I can slow down. So this is just an example of one of the loop ramp area. You can sort of see those red areas are the decomposed granite. They are separated from the mulch areas, which are the background, by a concrete band. So it provides definition and a clean and crispness to the interchange. And then the areas in the hatched is a tan-colored decomposed granite. So we have two colors on the ground plane, plus the mulch, and then reinforced with the planting. The blue dots you see are what I call art coins, not for any particular reason, but that's what they sort of struck me as. And then the asterisk, the blue asterisk there towards the bottom is a monument, and I'll show you those in just a sec. These are some of the candidate species that we're using, we're proposing to use for the interchange area. By no means this is not a set and hard list at this point. We're at 65%. So there's still plenty of time if we need to do some tweaking with this. So these are the artwork pieces. These are the art coins. They're a 12-foot diameter precast concrete coin that goes onto the slopes of the interchange area. So they'll be visible by the traveling public on these slopes as they drive by. You may have seen in other locations where they have retaining walls with maybe artwork. If you've driven the 405 in Costa Mesa and all, you may have seen those, the retaining walls with the birds and all. The reason I bring those up is the minimum or the maximum depth of texture in those is one inch, which is exactly the same as the maximum depth of texture in these. So although we're not vertical and we're on a slope, they should be very readable to the traveling public. And we pulled images, you know, one of my particular fancies when I put on my artist hat is to pull images from the natural environment, animals in the natural environment, because we've lost a lot of that in our cities. And so it gives sort of a touchstone to, and so that's where the inspiration for the artwork that you're seeing here comes from. And then the obelisk detail that goes at the part of the interchange is the ultimate height of it. This was, I think when I did the early plans, it was like 20 feet tall. I'm not sure Caltrans will buy that or not. That's one of the areas. Once the city is like, yeah, this is the direction we want to go, we'll get with Caltrans on it and see. But it was about 20 feet tall, and the eagle is out of a Corten steel, so that rusty steel. And the body of the bird, of the eagle, it's like in plates that are attached. So it's this cool art piece, and then the wings spread out from there. And then...
Greg Garab for Parsons. I just wanted to add a couple of things. One, as sort of the beekeeper for TRIP and the program management for the Thomas Roads, you know, we had to get the construction completed, and we had to get momentum from Caltrans that, you know, we are going to be delivering. And then this landscape piece is the secondary piece to the program. So minding our money, minding our budgets, minding all the work that's going out, we've got some great momentum with our partner, Caltrans. And if you see out there, you know, finally, the 99 is starting to take shape. So all this is done in concert with us sort of sequencing the work from construction to now what is the beautification. So I just wanted to emphasize, you know, this was all sort of programmed and planned once we knew where the budgets were going to be and how much money is going to be needed. So I just wanted to get city and community input at this point, because obviously we're trying to get to that other stage, which is making things look pretty. So appreciate. Jumping to Wybelle Road and the Auto Mall, we've been working for quite some time on details for an entry gateway monument along Wybelle Road in the median to represent the Auto Mall district. And in collaboration with some of the folks who represent the Auto Mall, the Auto Mall dealers, this is the rendering of representation of the design. So we are presenting this particular item to City Council tonight for consideration. This is approximately a $637,000 project that has a project number and a budget associated with it. In terms of public-private partnerships, we've been working with Bolt House Properties on the triangular area by Stockdale Highway and the 58, where it's just open bare space at this point. And Bolt House Properties has taken the initiative to come up with a concept to consider and to talk about. And whether we could further this concept in terms of working towards another beautification project. So there's potential public-private partnership in moving this one along, which would help offset some public dollars for sake of private dollars to design and potentially construct this. So in conclusion, our gateways along major highways are, of course, the front window to our city. And we do know that hardscaping reduces the water demand, lowers those costs, and lowers maintenance costs as well, also can increase the look and the appearance along these corridors. We do find that a clear and streamlined process is needed to get some of these projects through Caltrans, because some of the time that we've allocated towards these projects is wrapped up in that process. And also, these public-private partnerships can definitely add value and reduce time of implementation. With that, that concludes the presentation, and we are all available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Strakelous. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Strakelous, and thank you to your team for all of this work and design. It's exciting to see us moving forward on this project. We've talked about it from this dais for the last, I think, seven years since I've been up here. But certainly what you said in your closing remarks is certainly true. Our gateways along major highways certainly are the front window to our city. It's how people judge us, people who don't stop and visit. Their impression is left with the maintenance and the look and feel of our corridors, our major freeways. And so that is really right on point. It's something that I think we all need to consider when we move forward. Certainly, I visit lots of places up and down the state and develop an impression of a community based on their corridor. So I think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we progress. So a couple of questions related to that. Number one, you know, it's my hope that we can get to a place where we really have an elevated design standard for our gateways. And I kind of, listening to the remarks today, heard that there are a lot of decisions being made based on budget constraints, which I understand. I'm wondering what those constraints really are, and as we proceed with future projects, if we can really bring to the council some options tied to particular budgets. Is my hope that we can invest in high-quality projects that really leave an impression and may, you know, serve us an extended period of time than for us to opt into an improvement project that may be a short-term, maybe lesser quality, inferior product? Can you speak to that?
Sure. In terms of the funding for some of these projects, they've been budgeted for a couple of years at least, and so we've had the funding allocated. Some of the process, though, has been very difficult to get through. And during this time lapse, we see cost of living and construction price index increases, which increases the overall cost of the project. So I would say, to a certain degree, we have plans and designs that we want to pursue and implement. And when they're on the state freeway system, there are processes that must be followed and layers of process that have to take place. And getting through that process can be challenging, and sometimes that process is unclear. So in pursuing that, we're getting more clarity on the state process by which we implement some of these or request implementation of these beautification projects. I think Caltrans has a series of standards that they follow for how things are done on the freeway system, and we must look at those standards and where we request to vary from them, work with Caltrans on any variances to that. I think we're finally at a point where some of these plans that we've been working on for so long are coming to reality. We're about to go out to bid for some of them. The Hoskins Interchange Project became reality, and I think we've learned from that project how we can even further enhance and possibly reduce costs on some of these projects. But no doubt, they are more costly than the typical standard, but the long-term benefits for reducing irrigation costs and maintenance costs are definitely there.
Okay. Thank you. And then a couple of just minor points I wanted to bring up. Number one is I love the designs of the bridges. I'm hoping that we can pursue this in some of our under crossings in downtown as a gateway, which is part of our design for Chester Avenue and other improvement areas. So that's exciting to see happen. I whispered to the mayor because she is a music major, and I know she's expertise. I just wondered if we have consulted with a musician or someone who actually reads music, because I'm not sure this particular design works from that perspective. Just a little piece of feedback. And then finally, and this is very controversial, but the Bakersfield sign, I love the Bakersfield sign. I bring visitors all the time, but I don't think that we have to replicate the Bakersfield sign in everything that we do. We did it at the Marquee, at the Visitor Center. We're doing it at the Auto Mall. I think it's wonderful that we do it, but in future, I think maybe we can explore other designs as well. That would be my preference.
Understood. There was a lot of collaboration on the Auto Mall sign.
Sure.
There were racetrack types of approaches to that, but in the end, that collaboration consensus came to this.
Certainly. It looks beautiful. It looks wonderful. I'm just speaking for the future. Yeah. Thank you.
Great work.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, exciting to see some of this come to fruition finally. I actually went and looked at Hoskins a week or two ago, and it looks great. And, you know, you don't need ground cover everywhere and, you know, some trees and some different color variations, and it came out great. So if we can kind of go forward with that, it would be great. And one of the maps mentioned ground cover, and I don't believe it's really ground cover, so it's bark or some color or something, I think. It had a lot of it filled in, and it said ground cover. Also, on the coins, I assume those are colored in, or they're just engraved?
Well, I think that's yet to be determined.
Oh, okay.
My approach would be that they're...
So they're just gray concrete?
Yeah. So like those retaining walls I was talking about, it's plain concrete, but the image is reinforced by the shadow patterns created by the texture that's in the concrete. If we were to paint them or go with a colored concrete or something like that, that would, in the long run, add to maintenance, because that would have to be, they would have to be repainted and all. I think going with the plain concrete is cleaner and then, like I said, allowing the shadow patterns to reinforce the image to read. Does that make sense with the...
Yeah, I got you. It's just that, you know, they're on a slope. So how steep of a slope, I mean, some slopes are flatter than others.
A lot of these are two-to-one slopes.
Right.
But some of them are on flatter slopes, yes. You're right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, just following behind that question that he had, how much additional cost does that add to add those coins? Just out of curiosity.
It's dependent on the size.
Why don't you come to the mic, please?
It's dependent on the size of the medallions, and so we're sort of playing with visually what is acceptable and what is not. Rough estimates for the medallions are around $200,000.
$200,000 apiece or for all of them?
For all of them.
So if we did bring color to them, because I have seen in other cities going up the 99, or, well, it's up towards Sacramento. I can't remember where it was, heading towards Reno, that they do have some colored, you know, art, and it's beautiful. And many times I've driven up there and thinking, I wish we could do something with Bakersfield. Our freeways are just so nothing, you know, here highways. But the color, I was really impressed with this, because I'm thinking color. Now it doesn't sound as exciting when it's all gray. We have a lot of brown here in the area. How much additional cost does that add?
Happy to come back with a report on exactly what the cost would be for life. We were sort of trying to minimize, you know, additional costs.
Yeah.
But we can come back since the council wants to see what that looks like.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I'm not saying let's go spend a lot of money, but it would be nice to know what the comparison was.
I would love to know which ones you're referring to that you've seen. That would be, I'd love to see.
I would too, to be honest with you.
I'd love to see if I can find them on Google Earth and take a look and see what they've done and what you've seen.
Yeah. I don't know if it's up north towards Fresno or, I can't remember. Yeah. We weren't doing this at the time, or I would have made a better mental note. The other question or suggestion I have is talking about our historical Bakersfield sign, I remember that on Union Avenue when I was a kid, you know, when that was a main thoroughfare. It's got a particular font to it. I don't care for the font that they've chosen for the new sign. I mean, if we're going to replicate, if we're going to keep that look throughout the city, then we don't need signs that are different fonts everywhere. I mean, if we're going to do it, then let's do it. But otherwise, you know, come up with something else. But I'm fine with that as long as we can match the font so it looks like the original sign.
Okay. Understood.
Just a suggestion.
As we move the project forward, we'll talk about the font with the contractor.
Yeah. I mean, that's an easy thing to fix. Yeah.
Understood. I did want to mention, as far as the 99-58 landscape or beautification project, it is at the 60% level. So there's a lot of ability to change and modify some of the artistic pieces to this, whether it's the medallions, the coins, or the monuments. So there's good time to come back maybe and talk a little bit more about some colorization or some different configurations.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. What's the timing of completing this landscape project at the, you know, at the off-ramps?
So at the interchange of 58-99, the plan is, again, at 60%. We are, we have $1.2 million from Caltrans to allocate towards this effort. We are requesting additional funding in this year's '24-'25 budget to help match that funding so we can complete a quadrant along the 58 next fiscal year. So our intention is to only build a piece of that along 58. We will be under construction on the 7th movement, and then there's future construction on the 8th movement. So there's going to be a lot of activity on, say, the west side of the 99, on the north and south of 58. And our, our hope is that when we demonstrate the 58 corridor and the beautification we've achieved there, that Caltrans will integrate the rest of the beautification puzzle as part of the 8th movement construction. That is what our hope is.
Okay, I'm not sure I heard a timing there, like exactly when, a guess, an estimate?
My apologies.
Maybe what we need is, since you seem to be describing sort of phases, taking a piece in a piece, could you, you know, write us a memo saying, maybe this little graphic, here's this section we think we'll have done by the end of next fiscal year. Here's the following issue, what our plan or hope, just so we can see, how does this come together? And the same might be true of the big sign for the auto deal, just so we know, when are these? I know I use the word planned, because I know there's things, we don't have all the approvals, and
Yes, sir.
Maybe we don't have the money to do them all in one year, but it'd be nice to, rather than have it be, I know you can't guarantee, but, but when it's just totally vague, you know, people will ask us, and we say, well, we really can't tell you, nobody knows, that's not a good answer. I think I got the answer to one of my other questions was, who pays for this? And what I'm hearing is, Caltrans gives us an allotment, you know, a budget that isn't adequate to do all the things we want to do. So we're going to supplement that budget. Do we, 1.2 million doesn't go very far on a huge area like the one you showed us. So is this something where we match it, or we're going to have to, each time, we're going to have to spend as much as Caltrans to double it or triple it? Because I know we're trying to, you know, using mulch and be as efficient as we can, but I just kind of wonder, what, what do these things cost?
So the 60% cost estimate has this project running at about eight to nine million dollars right now for all of the work. And with the 1.2 million dollars that's been allocated by Caltrans, our request next fiscal year is for 1.2 million dollars to get us to about 2.4, or a little bit above, to hopefully do that stretch along the 58 up to the 99.
Okay. And I was glad to see trees in this mix, as opposed to just all desert. I would request that, if there's a row of trees here, row of trees, that we use the same trees. One of the things Parks and Rec has switched to and looks 500% better on our arterials is using the same tree. When we go down a boulevard, it looks so much better when it's, you know, all one tree, rather than this mixture, it just looks like ungarage. It just looks terrible. So when you put those trees in, it's really nice if you don't mix all the trees up. If there's one themed tree at this off-ramp, maybe another, if you want a different one, but actually through the city, having one themed tree, if you can find one you really like and looks good in there, would be beneficial. People just like a sense of consistency. And we've switched on our own arterials, and the, the new plantings look 100% better than the old plantings where it was just anything goes. And I think I got an answer, that the maintenance of these is Caltrans. Once the landscaping and hard game, do they maintain it, or do we maintain it?
Yeah, for those freeway segments that they control, yes, they would maintain it.
Yeah, on their, their land, so to speak. That's always a challenge, because we don't control it. You know, following up on what Councilman Gonzalez said, and what even Councilman Parley and I said for the last seven years, that every off-ramp, all we have is weeds and an ugly entrance. Every single off-ramp to our city is an embarrassment. You know, Panama Lane's an embarrassment, Rosedale's an embarrassment, everything. You walk in and it's just weeds, when we transition to our land as well as Kansas. And I was wondering, would these, would these designs fit if we, on our own dime, extended them up onto, you know, you can't really tell whose property is what, when it cuts off, but all the way up to the end of the off-ramp as you come into the city? It seems to me, rather than changing the theme and design, bringing the same design up until you stopped at the stop sign at the bodily off-ramp would look really good. And I'm wondering if we can explore that, if someone make a note and make that into kind of a project, because we've been asking every budget for seven years, could we please put, can we do one? I mean, Parley and I were like begging, can we just do one? So we're not so embarrassed when people drive into Bakersfield. Try Panama Lane, try Rosedale Highway, anyplace where you come up and it's landscaped. It isn't just weeds five feet high as you stop at the stop sign and turn into Bakersfield. So I, I hope we can get going on that this year, maybe do one or two, if we can do anything. But I, you know, I've made this request to Mr. Clegg every year, he knows, and Councilman Parley made it every year, and Councilman Cor will pick up the theme. But, you know, when we talk about branding our city, and like someone mentioned, the first impression, you drive into the city, and, you know, it's just like you drive up to a house, what's your first impression? And it's like, boy, this place must just be hard up. They can't even weed their off-ramps when you come into the town. So that, to me, that's a big deal. I'd really like to see us start addressing it. And I think that's, oh, was there some, when we talked about median landscaping, and we showed a picture, I think of Wybelle as you go down towards the auto mall, is there any plan to put a landscape median in Wybelle in that area? Or is that just my imagi, my wishful imagination somewhere, that if we're trying to make our auto mall area look nice, that, you know, Wybelle's a pretty bleak street down there on the auto mall area?
Yeah, there would be the creation of the median at the sign, the monument sign at the entry and some landscaping around that, but because of the frequent driveways and the need to keep crossing, we don't have any plans to put a curved median down Wybelle.
Down in the middle? You mean people have to turn left or right so many times into the establishments?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, those are my questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very encouraged to hear my colleagues and their investment in Ward 7 and to see it grow and improve, and thank you for the presentation today. I feel particularly protective, some sort of to you that kind of affect Ward 7. I'll start by saying that the, just to echo the sentiments of our city's corridors, both that being Hosking Avenue being our southern entrance, our gateway into the city, and how important that is and how much of a great or, you know, lukewarm first impression that can make. And I've talked extensively with Christian about this same thing, and, you know, it's encouraging to know that we have some freeway adjacent projects coming that will also give sort of a facelift for this gateway into our city, and some of these kind of improvements will also, of course, add to that. And then second, our auto mall being a corridor as well, being an economic corridor, and such a big economic base for us as a city, and how we are investing dollars and kind of giving that love back into something that we truly rely on in the city. So, yeah, just, just wanted to echo that point as well. And I'm encouraged to see kind of climate smart plants being used. I also am joining the crowd wanting for more color. I was encouraged to see kind of flowers such as bougainvillea is even incorporated. That is a, kind of for more like arid climates, that's something that is just a low-maintenance plant that just beautifies communities kind of immediately, including my mom's front yard and backyard and all of our surrounding fences. So I am really encouraged to see that. I'd love to know if there's opportunity to add that to kind of our freeway underpasses or even, of course, I'm thinking about kind of our corridors on Hosking Avenue, just is it, you know, some of these more like desert climate flowers, our California poppy, the bougainvillea, agave, which a lot of them have been included? Is there room to add some of these, to add some of that pop of color? I, of course, take that Hosking ramp every day to work and wherever I'm going, because I live right off of it, so I get to enjoy that. It is, it, it looks great, it does. It's a, it's a great improvement. I also am thinking about the summer and how much heat kind of is, will retain in that, you know, in some of the more browns. And also, if you could share how some of the material that's been used, how kind of rain, I guess, resistant or absorbent it might be? I'm curious about that as well. We don't want it to kind of keep shifting, and I know you all have probably been thoughtful about that as well. Let's see. I think those are my primary questions, and then I also just wanted to, again, emphasize and really kind of share my appreciation for bringing the Auto Dealers Association in and being a partner and really valuing their feedback. I know it's been a close collaboration, and I'm encouraged to see their ideas kind of come to fruition through this project. I know this is something that they've also talked about and some of my own vision. I would say this is kind of the start of us improving that auto mall corridor and seeing more improvements to come, some of the ideas like Councilmember Freeman has with making Wybelle look a little prettier as well, as when we're welcoming either locals or folks from out of town who are purchasing a vehicle in Bakersfield. What is the impression that they're getting? What are they leaving with? Are they able to walk through the auto mall? Is there, you know, is it pedestrian-friendly? Are they able to go from one auto dealer to the next in a safe manner? And also thinking about kind of the heat island effect and how we can even improve some of the landscaping in and around the auto mall. Is it incorporating some of the trees that we've seen in this presentation? So I, I think this is a great start, and I also appreciate the use of some of our native species and plants in, in the artwork. I think that's a great touch, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ware.
Sorry, I've been away for a while, so. I'm kind of following off of Councilmember Freeman's points. At some point and in some place of time, I think it is incumbent upon us to actually measure what we've done, particularly in a project like this. So if we don't, if we don't measure what we've done, if we don't know what we've given up to have this asset, I think that's, that's, that's our shame if we do that. We can't let that go. So I would like, when we get close to the end of this, I would like to know how much we have spent on bringing that to fruition, all of it. Caltrans grant, that's fine. All, what it took to bring this to fruition, and then how we are using that asset, if it's giving us what we needed or what we expected, that's, that's fine. And if it's not, then maybe in the next one, we could maybe twist that down just a little bit and have a much better handle on what's been going on there. But this is kind of, I mean, it's just a little bit different kind of venture or, or job, and I think it's really important to us to make sure that we know exactly when in there and what is coming out of it and what is generating for us. So is there a way that we can do that?
I think so. I think if we look at the Hosking interchange, for example, we do know that Caltrans had a project, and there was a cost to doing their standard level of landscaping. And then we do know the cost of our design effort and our contribution effort to go into what it is today, to make it what it is today. And we can break that down for that particular instance, but we can also carry that forward to other projects along other parts of the freeway.
Absolutely. I would appreciate it if we carried that on throughout these projects. Is there, is there a way we can, well, I'm sure there is, you guys are great at this, is there a way we can get some kind of return on investment? Or what do we expect from this as we move forward? Because we're putting about eight to 10,000, eight to 10 million dollars up?
Right, for the 58-99, it's a total project cost of about eight to nine million dollars. When you ask the question about what we can expect and we translate that to impressions of our community and putting a value to that, it's hard for any engineer or auditor to come up with a value to the impression of what they're receiving, but how that translates into tourism or more visits to the city, there are probably ways to quantify that as time goes on in the future.
Okay, well, I think that'd be a great start. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just following up on the medallions. It comes to mind, the Fresno monuments that used the tile out on 41. You know, they've looked great for a number of years. So that's an example of some spectacular color and artwork, I think. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Greg, and the team for your wonderful presentation. I just want to commend you and lift up the fact that this was, the Hosking project in particular was already a project that was in motion and fully funded, and it was because of, I'm sure, Greg's leadership, you know, his team's proactiveness to request a change order to make the change. And we have a lot to be thankful for. It borders Ward 1, is in Ward 7. I oftentimes will cross the bridge while on my runs, and I just want to say, it is beautiful each and every time
Thank you.
that we're out there. So, well done to you, and thank you for moving so quickly on this. I just want to echo, actually, Councilmember Freeman's comments and Councilmember Cor's. I think the more trees that we can get in there, the better. And if we're doing less trees, bigger trees would be great. We do know and we see all the time that we do have transient folks finding themselves in those particular areas. I think the more resilient that we can make those trees, the better we'll be on sustaining them. The other question that I had for you is, actually, let me back up. I also want to give credit to Councilmember Freeman. He gave some sage advice the last time this item came forward, which was for us to, instead of trying to do the entire corridor, rather let, choose particular interchanges to focus on, you know, and we get enough of those put together, we then fill in the rest of it. So it sounds like we're taking that approach. I really appreciate that. But can you walk us through, you know, you know, how are we prioritizing these, these projects in general throughout the city and particularly along the 99?
Well, I guess, start out, we're working hard on every single project that you've seen here, right? So in terms of priority, they're, they're pretty much all equal, and we give the same level of effort. I think it's the projects that we want to pursue beyond the ones that you've seen here that haven't been prioritized yet. Which ones are they, and how do they become part of this priority plan? And what are their costs? So I don't know that I answered the question about what these priorities are, but from a department perspective, we're working really hard on all of them at the same time.
Okay. Well, I would love to see down the road at some point, you know, more, maybe broad, high-level conceptual plan of what the entire corridor is going to look like.
Yeah, I would say that with the governor and the state coming out with a 10-point plan for beautification efforts within the city, it will be important to work with the state on state on identifying those additional locations and prioritizing, continuing the momentum and continuing to prioritize other locations.
Fantastic. My, my only other comment is a follow-up on the Vice Mayor's point about landscaping standards. Do we currently have landscaping standards for our highways and freeways?
So, so we do have downtown corridor standards that include landscaping and hardscaping, for that matter. I would have to defer to Wreckin Parks to address standards on other corridors outside of the downtown area.
Thanks, Councilmember, and I could speak to that. I think that the, the absence of other plans for highway corridor, because, you know, as Greg was mentioning, we have the downtown design standards. Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Parks has developed a simplified tree palette for landscape medians. That's trees and shrubs. And as we're doing the turf replacement program, you're starting to see throughout the city, more of those medians take on a little bit of a different look and that does have a design standard to it. But you asked about specifically the highway corridors. We, we do not have an established design standard for landscaping on the highway corridors. That would be a Caltrans standard, by the way. And Caltrans does have some design standards, but like a, a specific landscape design standard for the Bakersfield corridors, that does not exist.
Okay. Yeah. Not even sure if it's possible. But I do know that we're going to be expecting some changes in leadership here soon. And who knows how long it might take us if we're, you know, doing one interchange at a time, one stretch at a time. You know, we just want to make sure that the same standards that we're utilizing now are, you know, pretty similar to the ones that we'll be using in, in 10 years when we continue to finish up this project. So other than that, great job.
If I may, Councilmember, just to your point, we actually had submitted a direct funding allocation request to the state, not in this most recent cycle, but two cycles ago, to allocate funding for the city to at least create a feasibility study and design standard. That wasn't successful in our efforts to get that direct allocation from our, our State Assembly delegation. But that's consistent with what you're envisioning is that we see this, you know, the 99 quarter and the 58 quarter, there are a lot of interchanges. And I think you have to also think about 178 is a, a key highway as well. And so the number of interchanges, the amount of both design dollars and construction dollars for all of those corridors, just frankly, it, it weighs me down a little bit sometimes. You think about just the 5899 being eight to nine million dollars. You know, these are, these are very long-term, very impactful improvements. But often when we're, you know, comparing those sort of costs against other projects, those are tough choices. Also, when you, we look at for grants, most grants want to see capacity building. They want to see, you know, more movement of goods and people or they want to see more, you know, lanes, more facilities. And there, there are less grants for the beautification pieces, unfortunately. It's just, it's a challenge. And so I do think we need to create a vision for the entire corridor, yes. But also, it's just sort of my realistic estimation that that's a long-range plan. It's going to take us many, many years to continue to chip away at this.
Councilmember Freeman used the word branding. And branding is that communication of the message. The art throughout our city is going to communicate some kind of message. And as our community grows, I wonder whether there's merit in looking at the broader vision and having, as Mr. Clegg and I have spoken about, maybe a, an art expert who can keep an eye on the overall gestalt of our community. Oftentimes, people will defer to me and they'll ask me, you know, what do you think? What color should this be? That would be, I, I would impose my own personal preference and each of us probably would have a different thought, just depending on our own personal taste. I think it's really hard to ask non-artists to design an entire city. But to have somebody just keep an eye overall on various projects that we might be doing as a city, I think could be beneficial in communicating. So the council then would set the direction in the message for the art or the artists to communicate. But the council itself wouldn't be designing it because we're not the professionals, nor would city staff. That would be something that would be guided by the council's direction, the staff's direction. But ultimately, somebody who is an art expert could offer an opinion on the overall gestalt of the city as we grow and just kind of keep an eye on the overall message that we're communicating. I know comments have been made about that Bakersfield sign next to Visit Bakersfield. You have two different art styles together, they're juxtaposed together and I think it's rubbed some people the wrong way. Likely, a professional artist would not have done that. And so would that be something worth considering? Just hiring maybe on a per diem basis for consultation when we're expending a lot of funds? Maybe that could help us as our community grows. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A, a good suggestion. And we actually, just as a reminder, when we have gone through our Parks Master Plan and taken a little bit of an early look at the Public Art Fund, there, we haven't moved forward with any specific actions on that, although I would expect in the next six months to come back to this council with some recommendations from staff about how to start walking through that process. We did do an RFP for art consultancy and we did hire MIG as well. They were the most responsive bidder on that. And so we, we do actually have a art consultant to the city today. It was actually a fairly affordable cost to us. And we've had some early conversations about how to address, I think, city facility capital projects and potential public art projects, but very good suggestion, Mayor. We have not, I don't believe, made that overlap and connection into some of our landscape design and other art on some of our roadways. And so we'll connect with RIC and Public Works to make sure that that resource is available to also look at these same type of highway improvement projects at the same time. It's just, you know, that consistent look and feel and theming would, would make a lot of sense.
Thank you. And then just to the Vice Mayor's point on that musical artwork, there are some musical issues that go beyond artistic flexibility and artistic license. So maybe we should talk about that. Sort of like seeing California on the East Coast, the counterpart. But thank you so much for your investment. And Mr. Clegg, any final words?
I actually do have one question. I don't want to belabor it too much and we can try and take some of this offline. But, you know, Councilmember Freeman had noted some of the on-ramp, off-ramp work and where sort of the, the city work begins, where the Caltrans work ends. My understanding is, you know, in large part, except for maybe those projects that haven't been, the route hasn't been fully adopted by Caltrans, the entire on-ramp, off-ramp area is Caltrans responsibility. And so are you referring Councilmember Freeman to city medians and city street landscaping or are you talking about the on-ramps and off-ramps?
All the way down to a stop sign and there's always weeds three feet high and a homeless person sitting on a barrel. Or Rose Hill Highway, you come off and you look at, everything is weeds all over right as you stop. I, I thought earlier, it might have been you or someone else told me, well, that's the city's land and the city's job to find, to landscape. Caltrans is further down, you know? I could be wrong. I, I'd like to get that clarified.
Yeah, we can do that. We can clarify that. I think where you're at the, the level where you'd be at an intersection, where, you know, where a sidewalk, you know, might be that right of way, you start to get into city responsibility. But for the most part, the rest of those on-ramps, off-ramps are Caltrans responsibility. But duly noted, I just wanted to get some of that clarity.
Well, since they're not maintaining them, they're totally neglecting even from fire standards and weeds, you know? We make, we make our builders clear the weeds off their lots, owners, anywhere because of fire hazards. Caltrans just leaves it, it could burn the city up. And we did almost burn the auto mall up a number of years ago because they weren't maintaining their stuff. Can we get an easement? When they're not doing it, can we at least weed eater the weeds down? Can we do anything if they just say, hey, we don't have time or the budget, we're just, you know, they kind of control the branding of our city and it's frustrating.
Again, a good comment, I think, consistent with what I've heard before and, and my own personal views as well, I would add to that. We've had frustration about the, the level of maintenance. And, and I will say, you know, we have regular interaction with our regional staff. I do think that they, they listen to us and that they try to respond to the highest priorities. But there are funding challenges with Caltrans that I don't believe that the maintenance funding that they have is sufficient to keep it at the standard that we would desire as a city. We've had conversations with Caltrans about what would it take to do better. There's a couple of different options. One option is to go into an MOU and take over the maintenance of those areas. I think the cost implications for that are fairly significant for the city, but, and we haven't fully costed it out, but just off of some of the early conversations, those are, there's a major cost impacts for us to do that maintenance. But we, we ask the question because, again, of, of, I guess, our own, the feedback and our own frustration at the, the level of service there. But, but there are some cities that do an agreement with Caltrans to take over the maintenance of those state routes. And Caltrans has provided some offsets to those costs, what their own operating costs are, but it's not usually the full cost of what we would pay for maintenance. Another option is to, we, during the pandemic in particular, as well as even currently, we do have, and I'm forgetting now the name of the, the technical term, but you can get basically authorization to go onto Caltrans property and do certain work. We did get authorization to go and address certain encampment work. And we've talked about authorization to go and do graffiti abatements and also landscaping. So that, that is possible and we've been in conversations with Caltrans about what that would take. I would again just note, we would probably need to plan to budget more for our own staff if our staff are going to go and do that work or take over a maintenance agreement. They are possible, it's just a question of funding.
Yeah, I understand we would have to, whatever, get an easement or something, even if it was, you know, the last hundred feet or something where you felt like, hey, I'm coming into the city. Even if they leave that off-ramp for a year, I mean, the major intersection bad for years and we can't do anything about it. But at some point, hey, I'm coming into Bakersfield. Make the last 50 feet, but it just doesn't, that we would have an easement. If we just took it down to dirt, it wouldn't be that bad. It looked like, well, it was waiting for plantings rather than just scruffy weeds. So I think, you know, we, we could look at that and see, well, at what point, you know, minimize the part we have to maintain. Whether we planted it first or not, it'd be great if we came up with something very simple, but mainly just kind of cleaning it up. And I guess Caltrans, when they built the off-ramps over the years, they never had any obligation to landscape these big intersections or the areas as you come off. They just left it and they, the case is, in every city, they just, when they built them, they don't have any obligation to landscape the interchanges, never did. Because it doesn't look like they did.
Good question, Councilmember Freeman. I don't know the answer to that or if staff has the answer, if there's an obligation to do so, but.
I mean, when it was years ago, I just wondered because in some cities, they look a lot better than others. So you wonder, do they have easements over it where they just decide to pay or do they have better political connections with Caltrans to get them to maintain? Just seems like we were kind of left out of the, the discussion when they built the 99. It's just, whatever they did, they just left it and, you know, okay, enough said.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to receive and file.
Motion, please, cash your votes.
Now that California's run out of money, it's broke.
Thank you, gentlemen. Has everybody voted? Somebody hasn't voted.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session, 432-4.
Mayor, may I please read the closed session item?
Yes, please.
Closed session, item 4A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding Jane Doe versus City of Bakersfield et al.
We're adjourning the 3:30 city council meeting. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We only had one item on closed session this afternoon and by a 6-0 vote with Councilmember Ware absent, the City Attorney was given direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And we stand adjourned at 5:14. We'll start the meeting in just a few minutes.